AAA championship.
I didn't want to mention.
They won it the year before last.
Okay.
And they've beaten Princess Anne, I think in both of those.
Yep.
Wasn't that right, Tom? I mean, they beat them two years ago.
Yeah, they knocked Princess Anne out, I think.
Yeah, 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 that's right. In the semifinals. Okay, so, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of council, tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. The last time we were together, we talked a little bit about the smart processing initiative that we have. As a matter of fact, we have David Sullivan back here tonight. He discussed with council some of the initiatives back in January. This is a bit of a follow-up. Mayor, I believe last time we were together, you asked for an overview of the transportation package from the General Assembly. So, we have a team tonight that's going to discuss that. There's also an update from the general plan. I believe the last time there was discussion at council, there was some concern about the lifelong learning piece. So, Frank is here to provide an update with that, as well as one selected agenda item for our next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay. There are no council concerns, I'm told. Eddie?
I took care of mine during the... Sabrina's been great.
She's great?
Yes. First of all, I think we need to congratulate John Ramstein and his organization for the way that they brought the MEAC tunnel off. It was great. And I think we have something to build on for next year and the other two years, and hopefully they stay here. In addition to that, I think we need to congratulate our police department. I was talking to a friend of mine, and he was saying that it was... The way they had the area insulated, that it was no way in the world that anybody could come and snatch a pocketbook or, you know, do something like that. And that's what it's supposed to be, it's your goal zone. And that is one of our goal zones. And so, I think we need to give them a big congratulatory well. But one thing that concerns me is recently, we've had some pedestrian and vehicular accidents. I think we've had three people to get killed very recently. In addition to that, we've had some pedestrians hit. Now, there are three things that I think we need to pay attention to. One thing is that pedestrians are doing a lot of jaywalking, you know, they're not crossing the intersections. But in addition to that, we have drivers who are in a hurry, and I think we need to do more... Our police department needs to do more traffic enforcements. At one time, when we were doing traffic enforcements, Virginia Pilot charged us with having quotas. But if you're going to keep somebody from being hit, you know, crossing the intersection, that's not a quota, that's keeping, you know, your pedestrians safe. But the third thing, and one of the most important things that we can handle, is that we have to have some of the worst street markings in the whole Tidewater region. And I've been complaining about that. You can hardly see the lines going across the street. In addition to that, there are places that we have to have, that we should have some pedestrian crossings going into... In a lot of your neighborhoods, you have these convenience stores at gas stations. Norview Avenue, an area where we've had a fatality. That... And since that fatality, you know, I've talked to John Kiper about a market and no market. One that happened on Tidewater Drive and Bimby Ridge, I'm always complaining about... I mean, not Tidewater, Lafayette and Bimby Ridge. I'm always complaining about Tidewater Drive and Lafayette Boulevard. And that's another area that we need to have better street markings. And in a lot of places, we need to have these pedestrian arms to tell, you know, when pedestrians are crossing and when not to cross. Yeah. Now, going down Hampton Boulevard, up by Old Man University, they have the state of the art. But in some of our, you know, lesser important neighborhoods, you risk your life. And I think it's something that we need to look at, especially in terms of public works. There's no reason in the world why we can't have our streets marked. You know, last year, year before last, they said it was a shortage on a compound that they use to mark the streets. But it can't continue to have a shortage. And we just need, public works just need to do a better job of identifying these troubled areas and doing something to make them more visible. We had an area over in Berkeley, right by the fire station, the community complained about it, and they didn't do anything about it until after a boy was killed, a teenager was killed. So, we just need to get in front of this stuff. I don't know what public works does with their money. But, you know, and a lot of that, the public works dollars sometimes is classed and racially identifiable, and that upsets me. So, I just think we need to get on top of it and do a better job of protecting our citizens. That's all I have.
I just have one letter from 5300 Block of Roff Avenue, and I'll pass that down. They want to just have parking on one side. They might already be taking care of it. I've read John Stevenson, and just be sure we follow up on that. I think it's a... They got everybody on the block, so... It may be already done, but I think Terry, 5300 Block of Roff Avenue, they're so tight in there, I think they had a fire truck size light for a couple of cars going through. And so, be sure we're responsive, and they may have already done it.
That's a... What do you call that? Immune? But they don't pay for those cars that were hit, do they? Sovereign immunity. I hate... That's one law that I hate.
Trash cans on cars.
I hate them. That's a state law, I guess.
It actually came over from Anglo-Saxon, came over from the King.
Really?
What's called the sovereign. Mr. Burford?
Okay. One, I'm a little disenchanted in terms of... See, I don't get calls now, you know, in terms of... What is that, the weekly call to find out which council concerns or whatever? And so, one of the things that, you know, getting updates on projects that we're working on within our prospective communities. You know, last time, a conversation I had as it relates to demolition, I've heard nothing to date as it relates to where we are from a demolition standpoint in the Roy Creek area. Norview, I received a letter from a few people over there that, in terms of the equipment, I understand that some of the equipment in the fitness area is not working, or we're supposed to be getting some new equipment. But the concern is, folks say, you know, why don't we have the same type of equipment that they have over in Lambers Point? I haven't been over there, so I don't know what equipment they're talking about. I said fitness equipment. Yeah. And so, I hadn't been over there to look at it, but I see no reason why we shouldn't have the type of workout equipment that we provide for one facility and the other facility. And so, that was an issue. One question that I do have, from a fleet maintenance standpoint, I know we have a backlog as it relates to vehicles, but my understanding is that we have police vehicles that are inoperable due to the backlog in the fleet maintenance facility in terms of getting to them. And if we have police vehicles that are inoperable, then that means that we don't have the necessary cars on the street. We have the bodies, but we don't have the cars to be able to put in... The bodies to put in the cars to be able to patrol. Also, I understand that that's an issue as it relates to training, not having enough vehicles to properly train. And this is, you know, this is what I heard, so I feel the need to address it. But if that is the case, I think that certain things take priority. And being able to get our police cars into the maintenance facility and getting them out in a timely manner, so they can do their job in terms of patrolling our streets, I think that takes a higher priority than, you know, someone that's driving a car just to be driving it, you know? So, you know, would like to know, have an update on that. And if that is the case, then I hope we can mitigate that. Codes... I've asked John Kiper, I spoke with him briefly about this, and I spoke with James Rogers about it, and I know James has probably spoken with you as it relates to this. When we do demolition in this city, a lot of times, there are curb cuts. And I think that when we do demolition, we need to look at... We need to have all of the people involved, because when you leave curb cuts, then you have people going to park on the grass. And there's nothing worse than the city not taking care of their own property. And so, we have properties that we've taken down, and I've given James one notable property that's on JB Boulevard, that more even is Ballantyne, that when we take these properties down, we open the gates for tractor trailers or vehicles to park on the grass, because we create... We'd never go back and put sidewalks and close that curb cut. And so, it... They run all over the grass and the mud, I mean, just it makes the area worse than what it really is. And so, I hope we can look at that as well. That's all I have.
Angela?
Yes, some of you will be getting correspondence from a group of citizens on Ocean View Avenue regarding a parking traffic issue, you know, our favorite one. Another email went to you today, but John and staff is on this, so that we don't have everybody forwarding and replying back, which what sometimes happens when the constituent sends it. He spelled your name wrong, so you didn't get it. Anthony, you're Anthony Barcroft, so he's misspelled yours. So, he didn't get it.
Very good friend.
But staff is on it, and John and Ron, I just forwarded Ron. He did... This one's a FOIA request on that, so...
He's got a FOIA request on the whole study.
Yeah.
Which study?
This question, as a new council person, you're supposed to control that.
Just what happened with the bike lanes going in and elimination of... In the cottage line section? What?
In a plot.
Yes. But that's it.
One brief thing, Mr. Manager, there was a lot of construction going on at the 38th Street Water Plant, and they've now cleaned it up, and, you know, it's... And they just need to come back, I think, and do a little landscaping there at the top of 38th down by Palatine. You know, I mean, I've gotten so used to just looking at sort of the dirt there, that... But now that all the pipes and everything are gone, it really could use some grass, you know, just some. The other thing is, I think we had, despite a little drizzle, a very successful St. Patrick's Day Parade, and I want to thank everybody who cooperated with that. And I think the Knights were... Felt like, you know, they had... You know, whatever issues they had had been heard and worked with, and I want to thank the chief. The chief's police department was in great shape, good form during the St. Patrick's Day Parade as well, so thank you for that. Okay. I saw Jill Nolan at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, sneaking around, taking pictures, waiting, I mean, just waiting for somebody to throw a beer bottle at us.
She's got a picture of you taking a Jell-O shooter.
Waiting. Someone lurking in the back of a crowd with her can't...
Mayor, members of council, I want to thank you for letting me come and talk to you about the new Norfolk.gov website and some of the activities we're doing around smart processing and citizen requests, filling those. I think you'll find the website, hopefully you've seen it. We've gotten a lot of good comments. I'm very pleased we're now in all turned out. And what I'd like to do is introduce you to the website the same way we introduce all of our... So, we have three very short, less than one minute, kind of tutorials on how to use the website. So, Jody, if you could start the first one up.
Welcome to the new Norfolk.gov, rebuilt from the ground up. New features make it even easier to find information and stay connected to the city of Norfolk. Features like NotifyMe can message you about public meetings, events, and more, straight to your phone or email. With My Dashboard, you can sign in with Facebook or your email and create your own personalized landing page. You can customize your dashboard with quick links, calendars, news updates, alerts, and even track your requests. When you're logged in, you can mark any page as a favorite for easy access and easily share any page to most major social networks. Explore these new features and more on the new Norfolk.gov. Accessible, connected, focused on you. With NotifyMe, it's easy to stay up to date with what's happening in Norfolk. You can receive updates on city council meetings, news items, and press releases, community events, volunteer opportunities, task force and committee meetings, and more. Signing up for NotifyMe is simple and requires no registration. First, type in your email address on the NotifyMe page. If you want to receive text message alerts, check the box for mobile phones and type in your phone number. Then, just click the icon next to the type of alerts you want to receive. You'll receive a confirmation email with the link to activate your alerts. Unsubscribing is easy. Log in with your email on the NotifyMe page and click on the icon of the alerts you want to stop receiving. Stay up to date with NotifyMe on the new Norfolk.gov. Accessible, connected, focused on you. My dashboard on the new Norfolk.gov gives you your own page to customize with the information most relevant to you. Click My Dashboard from the homepage or the How Do I section of the top menu. Sign up with an email address or log in with your Facebook account. This will give you access to My Dashboard and other features on the new Norfolk.gov. This is your dashboard. You can customize it by adding and rearranging widgets that give you the information you want. Frequently asked questions, calendars, quick links, and job postings are just a few of the options available. To add a widget, click Add a Widget and browse through the range of widgets available. Drag the one you want down to your dashboard, and you're all done. You can click and drag on any widgets you've already positioned to rearrange them. Click the X in the corner to get rid of a widget. You can also customize your widgets. Click the arrow in the corner and choose Customize to display more items and show multiple categories of information in one widget. My dashboard puts the information you want in one convenient place. The new Norfolk.gov. Accessible, connected, focused on you. Welcome to the new Norfolk.gov.
So, when we started this project, about eight months ago, are a couple of things we wanted to achieve. The main one was, we wanted to focus on our residents and our citizens. We wanted to be customer-focused. And I think you can see from the highlights we showed you that we have allowed people to come in and basically make the website their website. Our website contains 1,200 pages of information and over 14,000 information elements. There's a lot on there. Many people have a hard time finding what they're looking for. And no matter how we organize it, we're not going to organize it the way somebody else thinks. They think... They come in, and it's very difficult to do. So, the focus was to make it very aimed at our citizens and enable them to interact with the government quickly, efficiently, and get out with the information they need or get the information to us that we need to do to act on service requests. The other side of this, there was two parts. So, there was the citizen-focused part, bringing the community, better website, better access to the government. The second piece was internal. We wanted to create a website that took less staff time to maintain, took... Was easier, didn't need technology people to maintain it. Everybody could update content. So, we deployed what's known in the business as a content management system, which means we no longer create webpages, we no longer have to code them. It's all done in a template-driven, and each department has people that are trained to update their information. So, we've really cut the overhead of maintaining the website. And the website is much more relevant moving forward, because it's easier to update, so it gets changed quicker and at much less cost. So, I think the whole effort was twofold. Most people will never see the backend effort. And actually, my role in IT is, you should never see what I have to do. The only time you see what I do is when it doesn't work right. Otherwise, it should be transparent to you, and that's the way I feel about citizens. They shouldn't worry about it. It should work, and that's the job we do, and we should do it the most efficiently, the most efficient way we can. So, this is the new website, and this is the front page, which was designed... It's a little different than our previous front pages. We partnered with a company called Civic Plus. Actually, the... A week before I started this job, 15 months ago, I was approached by Terry Bersurgen with an idea to apply for a web makeover contest, where the Civic Plus company was looking for medium-sized cities, because their market had been mainly smaller cities and counties, and they were looking to grow into a medium-sized. And they thought Norfolk was a good fit. They thought we needed a new website, and they thought they could help us. So, we applied, and several months later, we were notified that we had been selected as one of the winners. So, we essentially got a content management system, all run and hosted by Civic Plus, used by 1,300 other local governments across the country. They are... They have been ranked one of the fastest-growing privately-held companies by Inc. Magazine both in 2011 and 2012. They only do local government websites, all they do. And I think you can see, they've really figured out a way to make it work very dynamic, and that's the power... This is like shared services on steroids. And this is 1,300 governments, all their ideas coming into one place, and everybody benefiting from the good work that each government delivers to the table. So, the value to the city of Norfolk was about $67,000 with the free services. And then, we contracted for some additional work, some additional services that weren't part of the web makeover, that totaled about $40,000. So, essentially, we have a hundred-some-thousand-dollar website for about $40,000. Couple of years ago, we were budgeting for a new website. City of Los Angeles just spent a half a million dollars for a website. It's not unusual to spend a half a million dollars for a website. So, I feel very comfortable that we have a platform that is state-of-the-art, head and shoulders above what we had before, and actually, I believe, head and shoulders above anything that's around us right now. I think we've leapfrogged over other cities in Virginia. And they will leapfrog over us when they get their next generation. It's just the way that works. We had a team internal made up of people from IT and Communications. They did a great job. I... When you have people from two departments, sometimes that can be difficult to coordinate. And if you were to come in and watch this team work, you would not be able to pick out who was a communication employee and who was an IT employee. They work that well together. And so, with them and Civic Plus providing us the tools, we were able to create this website in pretty record time, because we finished the design in October, and then November, December, January, February, we worked on converting all the data, and we launched on March 6th. So, the next thing I want to show you real quick... Jody, can you scroll down to the bottom? We have a new feature on the website called Request Tracker. And Request Tracker is a place for you... We used to have a number of forms, email forms, that you would fill out if you saw a pothole, or you had tall weeds and grass in the vacant lot down the street that you wanted fixed, and those would get emailed. Now, they're all in a system called Request Tracker. And Request Tracker has a number of different kinds of forms. The difference here is that you log in, and you create an account, and when you submit a request, we now track your request. You can come back and see where we are. So, we turned this on on March 7th. Since that time, as of about 3:00 this afternoon, we had received about 930 requests. We had closed almost 700 of those. Our average closure time is about 39 hours. That's clock... Calendar... Clock time, so it's a little less than two working days for the ones that we've closed. So, I was very pleased, because I was worried that once we turned this on and we get a volume of requests that, you know, we would be seeing, but I'm very pleased with, I think, a 48-hour turnaround on average is a pretty good goal to shoot for, and we're actually well under that right now. Of the requests we get, the biggest number of requests are largely bulk-wasted collection. They make about... They make about 600 of the 900 and some that we've gotten so far. So... But we think this is only going to go up. I think people are going to realize it's going to be a lot easier to submit a request this way than to call in, give all your information. You can do this anywhere. And Jody, if we could go back to the homepage, you can scroll down to the bottom.
Can I stop you real quick?
Yes.
Can I just make a recommendation?
Yes.
Because I submitted a bulk trash pickup, and I made a mistake on it, and I realized that after I submitted it, I could not edit the form.
Right.
But I could add a comment onto it. So, I added a comment on it that said, "Can you please add overflow garbage?" On it, and it wouldn't let me do it. I mean, it let me do the comment, but I called Halima, who was very nice when she answered the phone, and said, "Could you add it?" She said she'd take care of it. And the other thing, too, was it's hard to find the Request Tracker from the homepage. There's... You have to go through codes where you have to click on... I couldn't find it, maybe I missed it.
Yeah. It's right over here, and it will always sit in this place, no matter where you are on the website, this menu.
So, I missed it, then.
Yeah.
Unless you added it today.
One of the things we talked about doing is making the Request Tracker an icon down we have at the bottom. Jody, can you scroll down to the bottom real quick? So, these are items that change frequently. So, this one takes you to the videos that you just saw, and these change as programs change, as our initiatives change. And that's real visible, and people can see that, so thought we could feature it there. The other thing I want... Jody, can you click on Apps Download for me? So, the other feature that comes with Citizen Request Tracker from Civic Plus is a series of apps that you can use to submit requests. So, we have just turned on the iPhone app. They are in the process of developing an Android app for Android phones, hoping that's going to be out within the next few weeks. But with the iPhone app, you can, again, log in. It takes advantage of where you are, so it knows your location. You can then take a picture of what you see, and you can type in what your request is and submit it. And so, it's very straightforward. It's not as detailed as those forms you saw. Those forms are designed for each request. So, the iPhone app kind of gets you in the queue with the basic information, and we'll probably have to follow up if we don't have everything we need. The forms are all designed for each kind of service to make sure we collect all the information. So, Citizen Request Tracker app. There is a Facebook app. Some people say, "Well, why would you want a Facebook app?" But I know people that Facebook's all they do. They do everything with Facebook. So, there is a Facebook app, and you can add that to your Facebook, and then it shows up on your menu over here on Facebook. And you can go in there, and you can submit a request from Facebook, just like you can on the website. So, you can just go grab that one. We have two other iPhone apps, and these Resources is all of the information that's in the website in our resources database, and Facilities is all our facilities. So, if you're looking to find out where the Lambers Point Rec Center is, you can go to that app, get a map, get directions. So, these are expanding. Civic Plus is building new ones, and the good thing about being in this consortium of other governments is, we don't have to do all these ourselves. We can ride on the work that other people are doing. So, I encourage you to... We're just now starting to promote the apps. We launched the website. We wanted to do each thing a little bit, make sure it all works, and then add another one and make sure it works. So, we just launched the iPhone app today. The Facebook app has been up there, but we've promoted it today on Facebook, so that more people will hopefully use it. So, I think moving forward, this is going to give us that ability to allow people to put it in, track their own requests. From our end, it's interesting, because I can see the statistics, all of our people managing can see the statistics of all... We know exactly how many came in today, how many we've closed, how many are outstanding, who has them. We can provide reports on how fast we're turning them over, which categories take longer than others. than others. One of the things we're trying to do is get a set citizen expectation because many requests take longer than others. So, you know, if you have a flooding problem on your street and you ask us about that, that's one that's going to take us a while to figure out in those cases. But if you have just a simple problem with a cracked sidewalk, that may only take a week, two weeks to be taken care of. If you have a bulk-waste pickup, we're usually going to do that the next day. So it just depends on what the service is, and we're trying to understand what those expectations are and let citizens know what to expect from us for each of the different kinds of services. So I don't want to spend a lot of time navigating through the website because I think it's pretty straightforward. The design, we used a different picture for Norfolk. Norfolk's website has kind of always featured the downtown skyline as kind of the portrait of that. We chose this one for a couple of reasons. One is it shows a part of the city that is beautiful, and most people don't always associate with us, so we thought it was a good picture. It's actually a great photograph with the graphic design of the page, so it works in this situation, showing the, it's got the right colors, it's long and narrow, it fits really nicely. These pictures we rotate, we will change those.
Good job.
Periodically.
Good job.
And you'll see that we're highlighting a lot of different things around the city.
Did we have to pay Rami to use it?
That claim's coming.
Yeah, we actually took that picture, so we own the rights to it.
Sure we did.
And all the other pictures. So.
I can email Sarah.
Yeah. But, you know, the part of the idea of a website is to make it engaging, and, you know, we've gotten some nice compliments. One local blogger called it, you know, a visual delight. My favorite, a potpourri of purpose. But, so I think those are pretty high compliments for government.
I thought Frank didn't know how to work it.
And, you know, I'm happy to talk about any of the other aspects, answer any questions about the new Norfolk.gov, any reactions.
That was great.
I think it's great, David, and I've heard all five of them. Some young lady checking me out of the grocery store the other day before I get, when she was handing me my change, told me how much she liked the new website. I said, "Really?"
You didn't know what she was talking about.
You say she was checking you out. You say she was checking you out, you don't mean.
I'm glad you like it. David, that's great.
How are we doing?
We have, I looked at the stats yesterday. Yeah, on the website.
Plenty of press.
Yeah, we've had a lot of press, and we had a Compass article on Sunday, it was on page three.
You have to go online to get the paper to tell you about the website.
The, as of yesterday, we had had 500,000 pages served up and about almost 200,000 users. And of that group, of course, that's worth launching everybody initially as a new user, but we saw about a 50-50 split between users who came for the first time and users who've come back. So I had 100,000 people already, meet people already go to the website.
All right, we need to move on here.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, Jody.
Thank you.
They're probably looking for jobs.
Mayor, Members of Council, this next overview is what we hope to be the beginning of a discussion that we have over the next several months. There's going to be a significant discussion on transportation funding and the future of how transportation funding allocations are, particularly in our region, happening at the Transportation Planning Organization of Hampton Roads, at the TPO. That's predicated, of course, because of the General Assembly Transportation Action. This evening, we wanted to give you an overview and some foundational elements of how transportation funding is in the Commonwealth. And then, and Brian will be doing that. And then when we come back, whether it be at a work session, or if Mayor perhaps might want to be an ad hoc group of the Council to work through some policy decisions that we will have to be weighing in on at the regional level with your representation on the TPO. Dale Castilev will be working through with our staff team to establish a strategic plan and recommendations for some of those policy issues. We're going to touch on some of that, but let's let Brian get into the overview of this General Assembly action and some of what we have before, so over the next few months.
And you're doing this, you have to pay attention to the time, okay? Because we're, we have a couple of other things, okay?
Roger that, sorry. So quickly, as always, you know, I've got 25, 30 minutes of information, I'm going to do it in 10.
Okay.
Okay. So the significant thing is, kind of boiling it all out, taking a look at HB 2313 for what it is and within the political context that we find ourselves, really, this is the first major comprehensive transportation funding package that's been put in place since 1986. And so it has a component both of statewide revenue generation as well as region money generation that we'll talk about later. It actually provides some significant increases in transit funding, and it ties those transit funding provisions to specific performance. This should lend well to what it is that HRT's been over there accomplishing with some of their performance metrics as we move forward. And one of the most significant things to Norfolk specifically is, this year, thanks in large part to our efforts and a larger coalition, we did successfully get the intercity passenger rail operating capital fund actually funded, and not only funded above the target, but funded so that it would grow as economic activity were to increase because it's tied to sales tax and a few other things. So in summary, Council, as we said to you before, the majority of HB 2313 actually accomplishes most of what Council had incorporated in its 2013 General Assembly package as we look for ways to identify sustainable transportation revenue sources. Very quickly, because the one point of contention that Norfolk administration has been tracking closely is the specific impacts associated with what the media has called the general fund take, which in fact, the provisions within HB 2313 actually dedicates 1/8 of 1% of the existing general sales and use tax for education, but it's transferring away approximately $700 million. Now, what they did as a compromise effort was to say that, okay, if we are successful in moving forward with what they call the Marketplace Equity Act, which is essentially a collection of sales tax at the point of sale, if you were a Virginian and you went to Maryland, you made a purchase, well, that purchase would be subject to taxation of Virginia taxes, and it would be remitted back. So there's supposed to be a sizable amount of money if this moves forward. There's a difference of opinion out there of whether or not that happens. As we're speaking right now, there isn't legislation currently moving to address this, but we have what a lot of members are calling a trigger that says if the money is not appropriate from MEA January 1st, 2015, there's going to be approximately a $923 million transfer into the general fund as it comes with. So it's an effort to make us whole, if you will. Very quickly, going through the different components of the statewide revenue that's being generated, you see, as has been discussed in the press, that we are actually eliminating the states imposed 17.5% per gallon. This is the price that's paid at the pump. And we are starting to move towards what we will, if the governor is to sign the HB 2313S as it's drafted, to application of the tax on the wholesales, that's on the rack. You see all the other different provisions, including the alternate fuel for fuel vehicles. There's a $100 a year annual impact fee. Totalling it up, you see that right around FY18 is when we start to normalize where it's fully implemented, and it's collecting about $880 million a year, over and above what we're collecting now. Looking at the regional monies that are generated, again, it's the same variables that we're looking, but what you see is it totals to by FY18 in Hampton Roads, we're generating approximately $165 million per year. And you see that we're fast approaching $700 million collected over the five-year period. The regional component, as we say, it sets up the special regional fund. It includes the additional 0.7 state-imposed sales tax for the region, and it raises our sales tax to 6%, includes the 2.1 state tax on wholesale distribution of motor fuels. It does allow for Northern Virginia to apportion monies for congestion relief fund, but does not allow that in Hampton Roads. Also in Hampton Roads, we are only allowed to spend these monies on actual construction transportation projects, not transit, whereas Northern Virginia has a lot more latitude in what their money, than what they can spend. There is a maintenance of effort requirement for both Northern Virginia and in Hampton Roads. That is probably the largest issue of contention that the governor's facing because he's hearing from a lot of folks up in Northern Virginia that feel that the maintenance of effort metric, one, is not very clear as far as what is considered maintenance of effort and what is not, and also, they would like the option to do more of a weighted average or an average over a period of time instead of a particular snapshot. So that still is to be worked out during the reconvene session. All in total, what we're looking at here over five years is approximately $1.6 million, I'm sorry, billion dollars being generated in Hampton Roads, over and above. Taking it a step back, just to kind of plug it in and see how it fits into the larger scheme of things, of how funding is accomplished at various levels, this source is coming from some analysis that was done for Congress back in 2009. But what they've done is kind of thrown all the projects in together and say, "On average, this is what your funding partnership usually is or within range for highways, roads, and bridge construction, and then public transportation is all." So as we're talking about federal monies that are coming to us, and we take a look at Virginia's transportation revenues by source, you see that we are pretty closely matched with the federal monies, and that 21% of our total $5.3 billion is actually coming from federal sources. The unique thing about this chart that I want to point out to Council is that this 24% issuance of bond is substantially higher than what we've seen in previous years, but that the McDonnell administration issued a significant amount of debt last year, which is now showing up to where all and where our monies are coming from by source. Now, when you compare that against how we actually distribute the revenue, you see that in FY12 at least, 44% was going to highway construction, 34% going to maintenance and operation, 9% mass transit, 7% is kind of the other, there was a couple of other small slivers that are taken out for airport authority and for port authority, but it was less than 1%, so we did include it. The phenomena that we find ourselves in as a Commonwealth and the, what I believe was the catalyst to essentially forcing the General Assembly and the governor to come to terms with the reality we're facing as a Commonwealth, is that because of a constitutional amendment in which we are required as a state to pay for maintenance first before we pay for any roadway construction, what you have found, because there just hasn't been sufficient revenue to meet the demands, and there's a lot of reasons why, you find that we keep dipping into the capital fund for construction projects to the point in which you read 2017 in which all the capital monies will have to be allocated over to just maintaining the roadways that we have. This is called crossover. And so what that effectively means, Council, is that there would be no monies available for us to program in the capital funding from the state if it was left uncorrected. The other issue that is significant for Norfolk specifically, across the Commonwealth as well, but as you can see in this graphic, we were collecting as recent as 1996, almost $15 million a year to support our urban roadways. And I remember in my first session, 2009, they took away and abolished the urban allocation program, and so we're left with zero. This leads it to Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. What does that mean, and what is it that they're specifically doing? Well, what they're doing at our transportation planning organization is they're trying to develop the long-range transportation plan within the Transportation Improvement Program, and it has to be consistent with the long-range plan, which essentially means it has to be fiscally constrained, it has to meet a whole lot of criteria so that it would be, in fact, considered a candidate project for the regional monies that would be available. All of these projects that are using federal highway money have to be included in the long-range plan and the Transportation Improvement Program. Taking a quick look, now remember, we said we're generating essentially $1.6 billion here at the region. You can look at the dollars amounts of the key projects that have already been identified. These are the projects that the region has already come to some agreement that are the priorities. Now, the question is, how do we go about getting at funding these projects and getting them moving forward, which kind of leads to the discussion today to kind of set up the policy considerations that are due for the Council. Here in Norfolk specifically, if you take a look at our list of priority projects that we really can't move on until we get some state-level partnership, you see quickly that we have some sizable amounts of projects that we, as a city, would be interested in being able to find revenue partnership so that we can move forward as well. Moving forward, again, quickly, the biggest points to consider as it relates to HB 2313 is that the crossover phenomena will continue until 2017 under the currently proposed legislation, that it seems to be clear, only because of the limited amount of money, that it's great that we have these monies, but really, it's not quite enough of addressing the backlog of needs that we have. So the state has made it pretty clear in its public comments, as well as Secretary Canaan, PPTAs will be part of the equation moving forward on these larger projects, and tolls are likely to, in fact, continue. What is unique and significant is this evolving role of the HRTPO. So now, they will have access as a governing body to make policy decisions on how these regional monies would be best appropriated and spent to maximize the benefit for the region as a whole. And the other policy consideration that we haven't received specific guidance on, but generally, it appears that the Commonwealth will likely be the ones that will be issuing revenue bonds on our behalf, and that the TPO would have some say in the allocation of how those funds move forward. Again, the concern here is there's no provisions within HB 2313 to restore the urban allocation program, and as you saw, Council, that was a sizable amount of money that was coming to us in the past. Moving forward, we would definitely be interested in the reestablishment of their urban allocation program so that we can get at some of our street needs. Discussion takeaways, quite frankly, this will be a new day for the transportation world since there are real transportation dollars that are being identified. It does provide the reliable dedicated funding source for intercity passenger rail operating and capital fund, which was a priority initiative for the Council, and again, addresses the crossover dilemma, but we still have this question relating to the urban allocation program and how that fits into this overall transportation funding package. That'll turn back over to Ron.
So the next steps, Brian will be up at the reconvene, the General Assembly's veto session early April. We'll know then if the deal is done, if the package is complete, and then the work of the TPO needs to begin in earnest. I believe the mayor probably used the best phrase to have basically, I think, diplomacy at the regional level will be significant in understanding, particularly with the urban allocation, and how we, as a city, can plan for our priorities going forward now that there is a longstanding, ongoing dedicated source of revenue for transportation in Virginia, if the Commonwealth, at the Commonwealth Transportation Board level, isn't going to reestablish that program, should up considerations at the regional level. So those are the discussions that we would like to have with you this spring. Dale's going to lead the team to come up with some strategy and policy considerations for you in that vein.
Urban allocation was very important to us. Even when we rebuilt intersections like Chesapeake Boulevard and Oceanview Avenue, they were, we built that with urban allocation funds, we had to do it to certain state and federal standards, but there wasn't much money we could use inside the city to do stuff. In fact, when we were first talking about the light rail system, we were going to use most of that bond to pay for the light, you could use your urban allocation to pay for transit, and we were going to use that for the system. Just a couple of other things. This thing about the TPO, we still don't have any rules of engagement, if you will, about how we're actually going to decide how this money is going to be spent. A lot of lawyers are trying to figure that out right now. The TPO consists of all the jurisdictions. I think there, the TPO actually has 13 jurisdictions in it. And the voting is actually weighted by population, but the first round of voting is typically, you know, Hampton gets the same vote that Virginia Beach does, or, I mean, there isn't, Williamsburg gets the same vote that Norfolk does, they have 13,000 and 14,000 in it. So we have to go get by, we still have to figure out how to do that without looking like the larger cities are imposing their will on the smaller cities and heating up the money. the money. The one good thing about this is that there's always been a disconnect with people who've planned these roads, like the TPO or Northern Virginia or the other, you know, planning districts. We planned them and we gave, and we said to the General Assembly, this is how much money we need. And finally, we closed that distance between the planners and the funders are now sitting at the table together. As we get money in, as we know how much money we've got, we know how much we can spend and we know how to do it. We never, we're always working in two different rooms at different moments in time. The other thing, the Virginia Port Authority is determined, at least they have said they're going to decide on March the 26th, what they're going to do with the port. And I've asked to address the Port Authority at some point in the future to talk about the payment and lieu taxes piece, which is still a hot button item for us. And, you know, we get about a million, just, just a little, a couple of dollars more than a million dollars a year for, for 668 or 64 deep quarter acres. And the Maritime Association has agreed to support us in this now. Some old members, some folks on the Virginia Port Authority, guys like, or PIT, guys like Joe Dorto and others, I think, you know, will help us. So I'll be speaking to the Port Authority, trying to get their support as well for the payment of lieu taxes, and also to make a presentation on the Patriots Crossing. So we'll know in about a week what they're going to do with the port. Okay? Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, a couple of weeks ago, we presented to you the general plan as recommended by the Planning Commission, and at that time, there was concern expressed that lifelong learning was a council priority that wasn't made more prominent approach within the Plan Norfolk, Plan Norfolk 2030. So what we've tried to do is look at how we can incorporate this into Plan Norfolk more prominently. What we've done is we, we didn't create anything new in this. We pulled the goals, outcomes, and actions that dealt with lifelong learning, including education, that were embedded in quality community services, the economic development chapter, the enduring daily life chapter, and we pulled them together into a single new chapter. And I say we, I should acknowledge, my staff told me to leave it alone because I could finish it faster if I wasn't hovering over them and doing it. And then the other thing that we did is we looked at the city managers, the city council's lifelong learning priority action plan, and we pulled actions out of that in order to make this work. We still have work to do, so this will not be ready in a complete final form by the time you are voting on the plan, but we wanted to give you the update of where we are. This chapter is complete, but we still have to edit the remainder of the plan, filling in cross-references and incorporating this new chapter throughout the document. We did add a new statement in the vision, which, statement which the Planning Commission had previously developed, and this is what is shown in red, opportunities for learning that extend through all stages of life. Then we added a chapter, and we fit it in where we thought it logically fit in the overall pattern of the plan, this would become chapter eight. So this is one of the things that we are trying to do now, renumber everything so that it still works as a single document. And I will let you know, one of the other things we did, because someone has already asked me, did we get releases for all the pictures of kids? Yes, we have written releases for every picture of a kid that you see in the document. This is how it begins, this is the first page. It's set up just like all of the other chapters are, where you have the statement out of the vision, statement of the plan, and then you have background information on the document. In terms of the goals and actions and outcomes, again, there's nothing new. What we did is we pulled a new goal, this one is new, lifelong learning opportunities are sponsored to the changing needs of Norfolk's population. And then we pulled from community services what the goal had been for education. The preparedness for school came out of the lifelong learning council priority action plan, qualified workforce is straight out of the economic vitality and partnerships. This is a new outcome, but it is pulling actions out of the regional cooperation chapter of the plan. The one thing when we did share this with the Planning Commission is they indicated that in this partnerships piece, there is not enough emphasis, and these actions are coming out of the past, or the, what was in the plan, as well as of the city's lifelong learning action plan, there wasn't enough acknowledgement of the importance of using business and corporate entities as a partner, so we are incorporating that information as we speak. We have already begun to complete the changes to chapter 13, the implementation chapter of the plan, which has the specific action, who is responsible for it, timeframe in which it needs to be completed and the cost, we're in the process of doing that right now. We did delete the references to lifelong learning that had been embedded in the other chapters of the plan, so we are moving those, and we are renumbering all of the cross-references so that, we hope we will have this ready for your public hearing next Tuesday night, but I'm not going to guarantee we'll have the final version for you to vote on that night, but we did want to, to let you know, we have been working to incorporate this. And I believe the manager's office has versions of this chapter if they haven't already sent it to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Credit goes to Mr. Liski and his staff. Again, they tell me stay out of this because I would slow it down, I'd ask too many questions. They were right. And then the last item I have for you is a...
Before you get to this, is these pizza, Barbara zoning thing coming that we...
Yes.
But you addressed the issues that me and Andy talked about.
Oh, Ann and I had a meeting with some other staff last week, and we were looking at how we could, could get with you and describe some of the strategies we have in mind. They have not been addressed at this point, but we, we have some ideas that we wanted to talk to you about.
Okay.
One of the other items that'll be coming up next week is a special exceptions for A.J. Gators on Shore Drive. This is a new establishment, and they are in the Oceanview area, and they have applied for a special exception for an entertainment establishment. It is located in the shopping center, the Shore Drive, what is it, Shore Drive Plaza Shopping Center.
East Beach Shops.
Part of our records at Shore Drive Plaza, so on the west side of Shore Drive. The issue that we needed to call your attention to with the credit, some of the confusion here, some of the issues here, I won't call it confusion, I'll call it issues, is A.J. Gators requested the ability to stay open until 1:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday, 2:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays, and then midnight on Sundays. Frankly, we as staff weren't comfortable with recommending that because what we looked at is what the, what city council had done with Mojo Bones, and so our recommendation was exactly the same hours as you had previously approved for Mojo Bones, believing that was the precedent we should follow. And that is an hour earlier than what A.J. Gators was requesting consistently across the board. Seats will be 307, total capacity of 333. They will have entertainment, we have no issues with that, the only issue was the hours. Again, we weren't comfortable, given Council's prior action, that we took that as the precedent that we should follow. At the public hearing, the applicant was there in support, we had one citizen who was there in support, and we had a letter of support from the East Oceanview Civic League. The East Oceanview Civic League has recommended giving A.J. Gators the later hours that they have requested, as opposed to the hours that staff has recommended. There was no opposition to this item. As staff, we did recommend the hours, the reduced hours to be consistent with your prior action with regard to Mojo Bones. It's one hour less than what the applicant had asked for. Planning Commission voted five to two to recommend the hours requested by the applicant, which were also the hours requested by, or supported by the Civic League, and there, the five who voted in the majority said they were doing this based on community support for the later hours. The minority said that they didn't think that we should second guess what council has previously done and should leave the hours at what council had recommended until council does something different. What is there will be the ordinances, or that you'll have to vote on, is the ordinances recommended by Planning Commission, which is how the attorneys bring that forward. So it would have the later hours on it. I will let you know, we have other requests in Oceanview that are waiting to see what you do on this one as they move forward. We have one, and then I've been contacted by some other people, Monolite Pizza's the only one we have actively in front of.
And they, theirs has been delayed because the Civic League, they couldn't attend the Civic League meeting to discuss it, so it's been delayed.
It will, it will be voted on this month as opposed to last month when they originally...
I think he's going to pull a delay, he's going to ask for a delay because the Civic League is not...
Okay, he hasn't, he hasn't told us yet what they're doing, but we have not received anything from the Civic League on their...
Are these existing restaurants that are making, that will bring you that?
Yeah, the only one that is brand new is Gators. The others are existing restaurants that have talked to us about modifying their hours.
That'll be next week, right? Okay, did you have anything proposed? You don't have a closed session left. We can get Fennick to back up here. He can, he can. I didn't mean to rush you, Brian, you got anything to say? I didn't mean to, you know. I thought the transportation thing was actually going to run longer, I thought that was... Otherwise, we can take a break and start writing on the next... Is that it? Okay. Marvel of marvels. Okay. All right, then we'll start right at seven.